I call to order the March 8, 2016 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone, join us tonight here in council chambers, as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are pleased to have citizens participate in their local government in any way, so welcome to all. Would the City Clerk please take the roll call?
Pansky, here.
Stepanik?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present seven.
Would Councilmember Pansky please let us in invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance with our two students helping us?
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have certificates for each of our students, but first, we're going to ask them a few questions. You want to turn this way, so you can face over that corner in the audience. And just your name, where you go to school, your age, and what your favorite subject is.
My name is Sam Johnson. I go to Oakwood Elementary. I'm 11, and my favorite subject is science.
Great. And as for you?
I'm Max Kirchner. I'm, I go to Oakwood Elementary School. I am also 11, and my favorite subjects are science and social studies.
Maybe some new engineers on the way. This is for you, Max. Thank you, guys. Now, you're welcome to stay, or you can go home and do homework. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is Resolution 16-97, which I will read three times. Resolution 16-97, approved final resolution for special assessments, contract number 16-05, paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, second local street concrete paving program, south side area.
Good evening, council.
And we'll need your name and address, please.
Nick Lang, 640 Farmington Avenue. I would strongly urge you to change contract 16-05 to not include sidewalks for 640 Farmington and the adjoining areas, for a couple of reasons. First being that the, there's a lack of a current needed. The road is a dead end. There are no sidewalks and adjoining streets for Anderson. There's increased liability for the homeowners, as we see more and more people traveling these sidewalks that are going to be on our property. And there are no plans for current development. I spoke with Steve earlier. It sounds like development for that area is going to be out, quote, "a ways."
Second reading, Resolution 16-97, approved final resolution for special assessments, contract number 16-05, paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, second local street concrete paving program, south side area. Resolution 16-97, approved final resolution for special assessments, contract number 16-05, paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, second local street concrete paving program, south side area. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this issue, this item again?
Hi there, my name is Michael Howard. I live at 1025 Northwestfield Street. The amount that was assessed to my family for this project was well over $13,000, which is 12% of my property's value, even spread out over the maximum period of 15 years. That equates to a more than considerable increase to my cost of living. My questions are these. The resolution says that the benefits of this project will outweigh the cost, but it's unclear as to what exactly those benefits are. Second, I see that storm and sanitary sewers are also set to be renovated, redone during this project, and wondering what guarantees you have that the improvements made to those will prevent future flood damage to my property, a property that has historically been subject to a lot of flood damage. And finally, with 11 proposed projects taking place all across the city, and with my street in particular being a major method of access to Oshkosh West High School, I'm wondering why we aren't considering spreading the cost of these projects across all people who use Oshkosh streets, rather than placing an enormous financial burden on the families whose properties happen to abut these proposed areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
This is just a public hearing, isn't it?
It's a final resolution.
So moved.
Counsel discussion?
Mr. Godey? If you please. Thank you. To address a couple of the concerns, we have a storm sewer, sanitary sewer program. If you could kind of say, explain a little bit how this project falls into our continued plans to deal with our flooding issues throughout the city, and how these streets got brought into the mix.
Is there a particular street you want me to address? Westfield Street, or?
Well, he mentioned Westfield. If you want to start with that.
Westfield Street was brought in primarily because of the historic flooding in the area. We did do some upgrades in the area with the Sawyer Creek dredging project a few years ago, upsized all of the outfalls for the area. However, the storm sewers upstream have not been upsized yet. This project will allow us to upsize those storm sewers upstream to help reduce the chances of flooding in those heavy events. Sanitary sewer system is not that old in the area. However, we do need to lay a larger and deeper sanitary sewer to the north to help alleviate another problem that was identified during the Sawyer Creek dredging project of the fact that the area north of Highway 21 was served by a sanitary sewer pipe that was literally suspended up piles through the creek. Over the years, set back up against that, it created a dam, and was part of the impediments within that creek. So we had to put a temporary condition siphon in. It is functioning. It, however, does have the tendency in heavier events to cause sewage to build up in the sewer lines in that area. This larger, deeper line on Westfield will allow us to construct a lift station in that area, redirect the sewers, and address some backups and sewer issues in the north Highway 21 area. So those are the primary factors driving behind the Westfield Street project.
Okay. And then, it's been our policy that when we redo streets that do not have sidewalks, that we put in sidewalks in those areas of the city?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And because we do not have a wheel tax such as Appleton and some other communities, the council in the past, and through your department, street assessments is the direction that we've gone to cover some of the projects. Along with the Stormwater Utility pays for a percentage of the project, along with other utilities that are involved in the project, correct?
Correct. The costs for the streets are split, a third, third, third for the mainline paving, a third to each of the property owners. The city picks up the middle third. The city also picks up all the costs of the intersections, the handicap ramps. Storm Sewer Utility pays for all the mainline storm sewer inlets, and that, the laterals are subsidized that are put in for the homeowners. Sanitary Sewer Utility pays for relaying of the sanitary sewer main, as well as 50% of the cost for relaying the sanitary sewer laterals to the homeowners. The Water Utility pays for the replacement of the water main, and replacement of the part of the service that's owned by the Water Utility.
So those that are owned through the utility, all the citizens throughout Oshkosh are paying for those?
Anyone that receives a utility bill, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or discussions from council?
Just to reiterate what Council Herman said about the assessments, this is the way that the city has, pays for these projects. Now, there is, one of our colleagues several years ago, Mr. Hall, explained it one way, that what we can do is, is that we could assess the cost over a period of time, so that you would be paying a little bit of money over many, many years, and then when it comes time for the project to come forward in your particular neighborhood, that it would be paid for. But we are not, we do not have that type of a system. Oshkosh show, over the time, like many cities do, that has the system such as what Mr. Godey explained. I do know that, yes, I know that these are, that this is a large cost to your, to you. I know that there are many of us on, there's several of us on this particular dais who have also been hit with the assessments. Some of us on properties we own, some of us were, basically got it when a street in, behind our property was done once, and then when a street in front of our property was done, we paid the assessment again. So, the city does pick up one-third of the cost, so it does, so that in deference to what you're saying, so the users of the street pay for it as well. But it's just the way that the city has done this over one period of time. I'm sure the gentleman would love us to change to the paying for it a little over time right now, but then the people that we, that paid for their assessments a year ago would be saying, hey, what about me? It is one of these things, we did workshop this several years ago. It is something that comes up several, every couple of years it comes up. What's the right way? What's the wrong way? We have to figure it out, and if you switch from one to the other, then you have to, it creates additional issues of fairness for projects that were currently done. So, we understand your concerns and your question, but this is the way it's done, and it is throughout the city that this happens for when we do these types of projects.
Any other comments or questions, discussion? I would ask the City Clerk to take the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
We are not the point of citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or any other electioneering. Is there anyone that would like to step forward from the audience? I see no one, so we'll move to the consent agenda items. And consent agenda items are those items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Number two, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Three, receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, a Marcy Spencer, for alleged vehicle damages from ambulance sideswiping it on Grove Street. Resolution 16-98, award bid for public works contract number 16-06 to L. Dick's Concrete Inc. for concrete sidewalk, new and reconstruction, $1,044,539. Resolution 16-99, award bid for tandem axle chassis dual steer with dump body hoist hydraulic hitch plow wing and tailgate spreader pre-wet for street division to Packer City International Trucks, Inc. and Monroe Truck Equipment, $178,313. Resolution 16-100, award bid for leaf vacuum with front mount for street division to Steep Equipment Company, $59,146. Approved purchase pursuant to State of Wisconsin Cooperative Purchase for 2016 Ford Explorer for Parks Department to E-Wall Automotive Group, $27,477. Resolution 16-102, approved 2016 land filled tipping fees with Waste Management of Wisconsin for disposal of contaminated soil from various projects in the capital improvement program. Resolution 16-103, approved preliminary plat known as Sunrise Estates, South 3400 Block of West 20th Avenue, Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-104, approved conditional use permit request for a public utility structure at the 3400 Block of North Main Street, Furno Avenue, West Stormwater Detention Basin, Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-105, approved conditional use permit request for a public utility structure at the 2400, 2500 Blocks of North Main Street, Libby Nicolay Wet and Dry Stormwater Detention Basin, Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-106, approved amended public participation plan, City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Plan Update, Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-107, disallowance of claim by Kaylee Steger. Resolution 16-108, disallowance of claim by Megan Spod. Resolution 16-109, approved special Class B licenses. Is there anyone from the audience that would like, that has any questions? Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Mayor, I, a couple of questions, I don't, maybe Mr. Robby can answer. They're on Resolution 16-104 and Resolution 16-105. We heard some of the citizens' concerns tonight on a street project dealing with flooding and issues. This apparently is another project that we're moving forward, that should reduce some of our flooding. This is on the north side. Could you just give us a little more information about the project?
Yeah, I think Andy's got a good map up on screen right now. That kind of shows the location of the two projects. But just for reference sake, the 3400 Block of North Main, the Furno Avenue watershed, that detention basin is located right across the street from Wisconsin Public Service. So this is, in addition to reducing flooding impacts in the Furno Avenue watershed, this is also providing a measure of regional stormwater management for the North Industrial Park and TIFF 27. So it's providing a combination of benefits on the north side for that particular watershed and that industrial park.
Okay. When we do these stormwater detention basins, and that, some are wet, some are dry, how are those paid for? Are they paid through the utility, or?
That is 100% stormwater utility funds unless we're able to secure grant dollars or other funding sources.
So we don't bill any of that back to our citizens at all?
Well...
Through their utility?
It comes in on their regular utility bills, yes, but there are no special assessments for those projects.
Okay. Very good.
The Furno Avenue project, there will be some long-term payback from the TIFF District to the Stormwater Utility to offset some of those costs.
Okay.
The Libby Nicolay watershed project, which is just north of Bacon Avenue, again, that's providing flood reduction in the area. There'll be some storm sewer work to direct runoff from Packer Avenue down into the detention basin, so that it will alleviate a lot of the flooding that gets experienced in the vicinity of Packer and Harrison by the old Leach garbage truck factory. Anybody who's been in that area during a major storm event knows that area is impassable. It will also alleviate some of the flooding along Libby Avenue, and provide us with the start of storm sewer systems to expand into the upstream areas to further help alleviate flooding as we do street projects in those areas.
All right. Very good. Thank you. I have one other one, this is probably Mr. Davis. Resolution 16-106, the public participation plan, you want to just give us a little update on what that is about, please?
You know, as Mr. Davis makes his way up, I think it would be important to note, too, I think Public Works Director Robbie did a nice job explaining 104 and 106, those two basins.
Mm-hmm.
But also, I think it's important to know that community development and public works work cooperatively with BEMIS out in that area, in order to facilitate the development of these stormwater projects as a result of the dialogue with BEMIS. So I thought it was good teamwork, and I know it allowed us to move forward on these projects a little more quickly than we ordinarily would have. So I think it's a good thing for not only BEMIS, but the people in that area, that we were able to accelerate these projects based on the cross-departmental cooperation.
As well as, not only that, but it also secured a, an increase in our workforce in the community.
Exactly. And because these are so close to each other, these two projects will be able to realize some economies of scale with some of the soil removal, it's my understanding, and some of the other things, Gene?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Thank you. You know, these projects are extremely similar, they're extremely close geographically, and because the type of construction is basically the same at the two sites, we combine them into a single construction project. What that does is it allows us to attract larger contractors and a larger pool of contractors to hopefully help reduce our costs.
Okay. Great. Another public-private partnership.
Absolutely. As a answer to the question about the citizen participation plan, if you recall, we're updating our comprehensive plan. We're starting that later this year with the Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. And since it's an update, we're tweaking the citizen participation plan just a little bit, so that we can kind of bring it up to date and kind of scale it to what the update would be. This isn't a full-scale comprehensive plan, brand new from the beginning. This is just an update, so we've kind of scaled the citizen participation to reflect that type of activity.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other questions or discussion? I would ask the City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Next on the agenda is laid over ordinance, ordinance 16-110, which is approve zone change from A2 general agricultural extraterritorial zoning to A1 light agricultural extraterritorial zoning, southeast corner of 9th Street Road and River Road, Tallavale Goma, Joint Extraterritorial Zoning Committee recommends approval. Anyone from the public who wants to make a comment? If not, I will bring it back to the council.
So moved.
Second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move, to adjourn this matter with direction to staff to place on the agenda for the next regular meeting, upon notice from petitioner that this matter has been resolved.
Have a second?
Do we need to rescind the original?
No.
Movement, motion to approve? All right. So, all right, I will second them.
Discussion for the public? Bring it back to the council for discussion. We have a first and a second with the city.
It's a motion, so we got to approve the motion?
Right, but as a matter of discussion, this was, did, were there issues that were resolved, that came about for us laying this over the ordinance the first time? Have those not been resolved completely?
They've not been resolved. There is a court hearing, but it's not until after your next meeting, and so they believe they would be ready for the meeting after that, but this would just allow us, if for some reason it's delayed again, we'll just, as soon as they notify us it's been resolved, staff will put it on and we'll bring it back.
So then, do we want the motion to read, not a date certain, but until it's resolved?
Yeah, that's in there. It's been resolved.
Okay. Okay. All right. That answers my questions. Thank you.
We now take, City Clerk, would you take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Next, we have pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 16-111, approve amendments to the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code, Chapter 19, and repeal Section 25-119 pertaining to parks and recreation, the regulation of boat launches, fishing docks and piers, parking, parking and boat launch, user fee, and zoo entrance fee. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
I would move for approval.
Second?
Mr. Maurer?
Discussion?
Can you give us some, give the citizens some edification on what we're doing here?
Sure. The main reason that we were bringing forth the Chapter 19 revisions was to deal with some of the boat launch ticketing issues, and to allow our boat rangers some flexibility to do some additional ticketing if people are parking trailers on grass areas. And what that'll do is allow us to have our boat ranger's ticket for those, instead of having to call the police department or a community service officer. So the ordinance gives us a little more flexibility for our staff within our department. As we were looking at the boat launch, we did notice a number of other areas that we felt needed to be cleaned up through the ordinance, such as at the zoo, it still had an admission fee listed in there from a number of years ago, and as everybody's aware, we do have a generous donation from the Herrenberg family that guarantees a free admission to the zoo. So we cleared up a lot of the things that we felt needed clearing up at the same time while we brought it forward on the boat launch issues.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? The City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Now, it's the ordinance 16-112, approve parking, regulation changes on 10th Avenue and on Bone Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? I do have one question, I think Mr. Godey. Where on 10th Avenue and Bone Street will these changes take, take place?
I believe the changes on Bone Street are for the south end, along sections proposed to be reconstructed, so for Bay Shore Drive to the south to allow parking, where there currently is no parking. And on 10th Avenue, I believe it is from Main Street west for some distance to allow for truck churning movements to be facilitated for the proposed new development in the former Cantina property.
Yeah. Thank you.
And just Mayor, if I could, the Traffic Review Board both approved these when we had them in front of our board. Thought it was, this will allow parking down by the Bone Street Dock for the first time ever, which is good, and of course, the 10th and South Main parking will help for a new group pub to go in there. So it's another opportunity of economic development and jobs that allow those businesses to move in there and reuse a facility that hasn't been used in the city for quite some time. So it's a, it's a good improvement to parking issues.
And I believe the parking on Bone Street is just on the east side.
Correct. It's on one side of the street, and as Mr. Godey said, it goes with the street reconstruction, and that also goes with what Mr. Maurer talked just briefly about with the Chapter 19, because that Bone Street Dock is part of the parks facility, and there's timelines on that to when the park is. And there's also parking timelines on the Bone Street parking, so that the citizens don't have cars parked there 24/7, so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I would ask the City Clerk to take a roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Next, we have ordinance 16-113, amend description of boundaries and speed limit ordinance pertaining to Oshkosh/Congress Avenue. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this issue, or ordinance? Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Just a point of clarification for our citizens, that this is, again, us making sure that our ordinances reflect the actual construction of the road. So this is clearing up some language to match the current conditions after the construction of the interchange at 21 and 41, and make sure that we are consistent with the language in our ordinances and the actual physical road construction that's out there.
Any further discussion? The City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Next, we have ordinance 16-114, re-adopt municipal code book. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this issue, this ordinance? Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Will the City Clerk, please, take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Cured seven.
Next, we have a new ordinance, which is 16-115, and there will be no formal action taken on this item at this meeting.[1787.12] taken on this item at this meeting. Again, ordinance 16-115, approve amendments to the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code, Section 5-18 pertaining to special events, marches, and public assemblies.
Ms. Lawrenson, I just wanted to touch base with Ms. Lawrenson on one thing related to this. There was some chatter throughout the community related about trampling of First Amendment rights. And I know that this was addressed the first time that this came forward. This in no way is...when this is passed, this does not allow the city to control the public redress of grievances under the First Amendment with...
Correct. The primary changes in the ordinance are actually to take into account the switch to a special event coordinator. It's moving the...accepting the applications and a lot of the paperwork out of the city clerk's office over to the special event coordinator. In addition, we're changing, well, we're adding, a definition of organizer in the ordinance. The ordinance already takes into consideration First Amendment issues, and we have a separate and expedited process to deal with those. That process isn't being changed at all except for the changes in terms of submitting your applications to the special event coordinator and instead of the city clerk and those issues. So, those issues were already addressed, and that's not being changed by this amendment.
Counsel was aware of this, but like I said, there was some chatter throughout the community, you know, saying, "Oh, there goes government taking our rights away." But no, that this is...you still have the right to publicly gather to redress the grievances with your government guaranteed to you under the U.S. Constitution.
Yes.
Mayor? As long as we're talking about that, and thank you, Mr. Peck, I just want to bring up Section 10 of this new...of the ordinance. There is something new that's being added. We've not had a special event permit application fee in the past. This ordinance will put a special event permit application fee for a single-day event to $25, and a multiple-day event would be $35. This was brought up in front of the Parks Board at the same time when there was discussion about when special events take over a complete park, and we can't rent out facilities and that. The Parks Board felt that the work that has to be done by city staff to put an event together, the planning, the coordinating, to get the different departments together and all that, the work that the Parks Department does beforehand, public works, police department, fire department, et cetera, that there should be some application fee. We looked at that up and down the valley, and from Green Bay through the valley, every community had some type of an application fee. We thought it was appropriate. Once this ordinance does get passed, that fee application won't go into effect for any events until 2017. So, any 2016 events that have applied or will be applying, this application fee will not go into effect. So, I just wanted to add that. I don't...Mr. Mauer, if you have, or Mr. Snell, if you have anything to add to that discussion, please do.
Just to share our findings, as we surveyed those communities, that fee actually ranged anywhere from $25 to about $500, depending on the community and the size of the events that they were anticipating. So, that's kind of how we determine the $25 and $35 rates.
Thank you. As I said, there will be no formal action taken on this item tonight. That brings us to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Number 22, discussion on breaking out special assessment resolutions and notices.
That's kind of mine, Mr. Mayor. Like tonight, you know, we had those resolutions dealing with the public hearing. And we lumped a whole bunch of streets together, and I think it gets a little confusing to me and to citizens. We had that issue with the Bone Street/Bay and all that, where citizens, and we almost had to break some of these apart. I think that...I know it's more work for city staff, but I really think that when citizens are being assessed on a street project, that they should be individually so that council can address each one of them as an individual item instead of lumping them. For example, even tonight with the public hearing, it's at South Side area, yet Farmington's on the north side of Oshkosh. It's not Anderson. His office is off of Snell Road. That's not the South Side.
It wasn't me. I'm just saying.
I'm just saying that, you know, individually, they can be better addressed. You know, there were two people from the west side and the north side asking questions on that resolution, yet it makes it easier to me, at least. And I don't...I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, so please chime in if you would, if they break them out so that it's a street project for this street. And what is it? Boom, we move on to the next street instead of lumping them all together. I just think that it makes it simpler for us to address if there are citizen concerns. It's easier for the citizens to maybe just...I'm not saying you got to have separate hearings, you know, separate meetings like you did today. You had a meeting in front of this to discuss it. But I do think that when we vote on them, they should be individually. That's just my opinion.
There are a few issues that come up with that. And Tom, I don't know if you want to step in right here or if you want me to keep going?
I think it comes...is the gentleman's comments are understood and well on point. All right. Now, but when we look at the...at the wording of it, it is approved final resolution for special assessments, contract number 16-05, which leads me to believe that these projects are let under one contract. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, therefore, that is why it is listed as this. Otherwise, if we did this, would this create...we would have to have contract 16-05, seven...or 16-06, 16-07. And so, therefore, would that affect our ability to bid? Or is...that...the question is, is these come forward as a contract number, and is that why the things are...
Yeah, that's typically how it has been done in the past, yes. I think there are a few concerns. Obviously, on a project such as the one that was before you tonight, where there are several distinct remotely located portions of the project, I think it is not very difficult to separate. However, when you have a very interconnected project such as Bowen Mill, Bay Shore, CP, and Otter, it is virtually impossible to separate because then corner lots, for example, would get two separate hearings, two separate notices, and their assessments would no longer be together on one page. They'd be on two separate pages. And because they would be a part of two separate hearings, if one street goes down and the other street goes up, now, when they were together, they were still under. But if one street goes over, now we have to have another public hearing because they were separated and one of the streets went over. Whereas, as a total, they were under what would have been estimated. So, you know, in the past, things were separated that way. We had to redo several public hearings because of that. So, I think on interconnected projects with corner lots, separating them on a street-by-street basis will be very challenging and will not only bring more work to the council, but then the clerk has quite a number of additional notices that need to be sent out. And if the assessment on one street might be $1,000, but the assessment on the other street might be $12,000, those have two very different payment plans. So, by combining them or by separating them, you're making it more confusing for those property owners. And I guess if I could just jump in here, too. I did have a chance to talk to city manager Roloff about this item ahead of time. And I think James did a real good job explaining it. And we certainly understand what council member Herman is saying. He wants to make it as easy for the public as we can. And we want to do that, too. I think the main point, you know, just to summarize, if they're separate projects, we can do it no problem, and it'll be easier for the public, as council member Herman is trying to accomplish. But if they're interconnected, it very well will make it more complicated for them, and it might be more confusing for them. And it's going to require separate hearings for each, and it...I don't know how productive it's going to be. I don't know if it'll accomplish what council member Herman is trying to get at.
Well, and I guess to that point, then, I guess maybe the best way is leave it up to your discretion. I...not hearing it for the first time till tonight, the way you explained it, that makes a lot more sense to why we're doing it that way. And my street was one of them a couple of years ago, and we had a little bit of Sterling and Monroe tapped together, and then...
Right.
So, that makes sense. So, I guess, as other council members, my feeling is we'll, I guess, leave it up to staff to determine if they can do it as one resolution and notice, fine, because it ties in multiple streets to one project, and it has to be read the way it was tonight.
Well, I wonder, can we do more using graphics on the monitor, too? When it's being read, then we can support that with graphics, saying, "Here are the streets that people can relate to."
And can we keep it under one resolution number, but have...do something like we do with...when we receive claims from the city's insurance company, kind of break it out, so you have A, B, C. It's still one resolution, but just for the sake of discussion during the meeting, it can help guide our discussion that way. But it's not a separate resolution.
I think these are all good ideas. I know when we have the new technology here in the council chambers, we'll be able to do much more with graphics, I think. And having that information in advance, we do that quite often with community development. But I know James is trying to introduce more graphics with the projects that we have in public work. So, I think that's a good idea, and I think, Kyle, we certainly can explore the idea about the agenda.
Somehow making it easier for everyone to follow along is a good thing, but obviously, when we're dealing with complex interconnected projects, you really can't.
Yeah.
You can't spread that out. It'll just make it even more confusing.
Yeah, those are the challenging ones. You know, like I said, you know, tonight's project, you know, would have been a little bit easier to break apart. But, you know, the previous project where every street touched another street on the project would have been extremely difficult, and I think probably would have resulted in more confusion. You know, as we were talking staff-wise before the meeting, you know, there was a...one of our previous projects where, you know, one of the adjacent property owners challenged the assessment in court and didn't realize, because they had two separate sheets of assessments, they didn't realize they were two different things, and they thought it was just an extra copy. So, they only challenged one of their two assessments. So, I think that speaks a lot to the confusion that could be created if we break things up too much.
Okay. I appreciate the discussion in the background.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest thing, I guess, to, you know, get more rationale to why and how they get brought forward to us, and the reasoning behind it helps a lot.
We appreciate the suggestions, because it gives the citizens, the citizenry, a chance to hear some of these thoughts behind the rationalist to why we do it the way we do. So...
Well, I think we can do a better job when it's read, kind of explaining after the resolution is read. It involves XYZ street, and then if we have graphics supporting it, do a good job of informing, educating people what exactly they're talking about.
Yeah. And that just goes with the earlier discussion, I explaining how the project came forward. It had the Stormwater and the Stormwater Utilities paying for some of this and that. It's all that explaining, again, telling our story. That's something that has come out of our strategic plan every year, just about. And we want to continue to tell our story and let our citizens know why we're doing, and why we're doing it, and what the benefits are to them for us doing it the way we're doing it. So, thank you very much. It was a good discussion.
Very good. Next, we have Public Arts and Beautification Committee reformed. That is me. At the last council meeting, we voted to bring this committee back to life. It had been dormant, I don't recall how many years. I think the genesis was, we began this public art program using the Lake Fly. We got a grant for it. I just want to let people know that we are accepting applications to serve on this committee. And we have a lot of boards and commission openings in the city. There's one in the Traffic Advisory View Board, Parking Utility Board, Grand Opera House Advisory Committee, Committee on Aging, and the Landmarks Commission. We're always looking for citizens to step forward and serve in these boards and commission. If you have an interest in any of these areas, if history is your thing, the Landmarks Commission, planning, obviously, is more complicated. You know, I encourage people to attend some of these sessions and get an idea, is that something you'd like to do? Most meet once a month. A few meet two times a month. It means usually two hours. But it's a good way to get involved and to know your community a whole lot better by serving on these boards and commissions. All of the council serves on more than one board and commission, I think. Mr. Herman, you're on four.
Four, yeah.
Two.
You're on two. Kyle?
Two.
Three.
Three. Ben?
One.
One? Hey, I got one. You have two. I can pass them down.
Which one are you on?
Well, it's the rental registry, so it's not even a...it's not the formal board of commissions.
Right.
So, you got a zero.
You're at zero. Step up to the plate.
There is contact information on the bottom of your screen. So, right down here, there's a phone number as well as the city website. For those of you who are listening, that phone number is 236-5002. We are always looking, and this is the backbone of how we make decisions. Every week when...or every week when we get packets of information, it's from these committees. It's from these boards and commissions that give us the information we need to make the decisions here on council. So, these are very useful positions to the city, and it's a great way to get involved. It's where I started my groundwork on the city and how I got involved more and more with the city. So, we always are looking for your participation. And this Public Arts and Beautification Committee is one more committee that we're going to need to fill with people. So, we always are looking forward to more feedback and citizen involvement.
Thank you. Next, we have the second chance for citizen statements to council. And again, citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda. Are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting. Must not include endorsements of any candidate or other electioneering.
Mr. Mayor, Gary Gray, 815 West Greenwood. I'd like to make a couple of comments in regards to recognition of the neighborhood associations. About a year and a half ago, the common council approved a neighborhood association policy, which recognizes neighborhood associations are important factor of the City of Oshkosh. What I would suggest perhaps is to make the recognition of new neighborhood associations more of a big deal than just an announcement. Maybe have a little bit of ceremony, like it's done with the students in the beginning of the meeting, where people from the neighborhood association would come here and maybe get the certificate of recognition, and just have the council publicly, as a whole, thank the leadership of the neighborhood association publicly. I know that some of the council people do talk to neighborhood people outside the council meeting, which is fine. But I think it would be just a motivating factor to get more people interested in maybe developing new associations or maintaining their involvement in neighborhood associations. It is not...I don't think it's easy to be a leader of a neighborhood association. I think perhaps having a little event, not at the end of the agenda, but maybe at some place in the beginning of the agenda, in recognizing new neighborhood associations. The other thing I wanted to...topic I wanted briefly to mention is that it might be very interesting to have a workshop or roundtable discussion with all the neighborhood associations meeting and discuss various neighborhood issues at a council level. And just like the council have workshops on various other topics, maybe having a workshop, roundtable discussion on neighborhood issues would be beneficial. I think it would be. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? If not, we will move on to city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item that's listed under city manager announcements and statements is just a note about the citizen survey that's taking place. The written...well, first of all, I should back up and say that it's a project that we work on annually with the Public Administration Department, the graduate students at UW-Oshkosh, and they do a great job for us. It's part of their public policy class, and they work very carefully on developing the study, sending it out in written form to a random sample of citizens. And that component has been complete.
We also now have an online version that citizens can participate in if they weren't fortunate enough to get a random survey in their mail. So that is going to be available until March 15th. It's on our website. Anybody can go on there and fill out the survey if they wish, and we want your feedback. We'd really like to hear what you have to say about some of the elements of that survey, and it is valuable for us as well as the students. So if you have the opportunity, we appreciate that.
And we did actually use a question from the citizen survey regarding the wheel tax. And we learned overwhelmingly that the citizens were not in favor of that.
We did, and this year, this year's special question, I think, deals with the issue of diversity. I know that that was an issue that was brought up, I think, by council member Steponik during budget this past cycle, and we've had a listening session that was organized by some of the council members, and had some really great dialogue. So we're interested in hearing what the community has to say about that. So it's an opportunity for your voice to be heard, so please take the time to make it known. The next item we have is just a little plug for State of the City. That's going to be taking place on March 21st at our convention center. It begins at 6 o'clock, and for anyone that hasn't had a chance to come to the State of the City, I think it's been taking place now, oh gee, for about, at least eight years, probably nine. And it's gotten, I think, better every year with the input of the citizens, the council, and the department heads. It's kind of a fair atmosphere where we have tables, and the citizens can talk to departments one-on-one and see what sort of projects they're working on. And it's very exciting for staff, too, because they work very hard on these projects. Gives them a chance to talk to the citizens about an exciting project they're working on, so it's a good opportunity to find out what's in progress. And also, we recognize people that serve on boards and commissions. I know Mayor Cummings was talking about that earlier. We do appreciate their participation. We can really, the best way for us to function is to have, you know, full active participation by the citizenry, and we have members that have contributed a significant amount of time to that, and we do appreciate that. So that's another component of the State of the City. And then city manager rolloff gives a brief address, talks about what's been going on and looks forward to the future. And I think this, we've been working on the, and preparing for it this year, and I think it's going to be a good program. I think everybody's going to enjoy that. So that's the State of the City, March 21st at the convention center. Also, we are going to be engaging in another cycle of strategic planning. The council gets together with the department heads, and that's going to take place on July 14th. We're going to do that at the convention center this year. So we're looking forward to that. We've been able to make a lot of progress since we started the strategic planning process several years ago, and I think we're in our, probably our third or fourth cycle right now, and we're looking forward to moving forward for the 17, 18 cycle. It's typically a two-year timeframe, and it's always exciting. So we're looking forward to that. The next item, I didn't want to rush, but I didn't want to take up all the time. I wanted to give Public Works Director Robbie an opportunity to talk about some awards that we received at the recent watershed, Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance. And James, could you talk a little bit about that more specifically?
Certainly. This year, the Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance once again chose Oshkosh to host their annual conference. This was the second year in a row now that our convention center has hosted the conference. The Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance is really a large organization, not a large organization, but an organization set up to promote information, education, and programs within the watershed of the Fox and Wolf Rivers. As you may be aware, the city of Oshkosh is within the Fox Wolf watershed. We're in what's referred to as the Upper Fox Watershed. And so the conference, this was the 17th annual conference that Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance has hosted. The conference really began as kind of a stormwater conference for stormwater professionals in the state to get together and share ideas. Over the years, it has transformed from just a stormwater conference to a true watershed-wide conference focusing on not just stormwater issues, but also wastewater issues, agricultural issues, and other impacts within the watershed. This year was the first year that the Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance implemented what they refer to as their Watershed Impact Heroes Awards. There were five categories of awards, an individual award given to a specific individual who has done a tremendous amount of effort in promoting information, education, and improvements within the watershed. There was also an organization award given, again, to an organization that works to really make significant improvements in the watershed. There was also a stormwater award, an agricultural award, and then a wastewater award. So you can see the awards focused on the wide variety of categories or impacts within the watershed. We are very pleased to be able to report that the Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance did choose the city of Oshkosh Stormwater Utility and our stormwater program to receive the inaugural Stormwater Watershed Impact Hero Award this year. You know, I think it speaks a lot to the work that we've been able to accomplish. You know, a lot, this work couldn't be done without the support of our elected officials and the council that we have not only before us today, but those that preceded you in supporting all of the projects and initiatives that we brought forward to try to improve not only flooding, but water quality within our city. It also speaks a lot to the ideas and the information and inspiration that our utility committee gives to us. They really do function as a great sounding board for staff to be able to talk about ideas and projects, and they help us come up with ideas on how to promote projects and keep those initiatives moving. I think one of the other things that I would like to thank Mayor Cummings for attending the award ceremony with us last week, Tuesday night. But I think in addition to all those, I think, you know, our program couldn't be where it is right now without the support of our previous Public Works Director David Pottek and our previous city manager, Richard Woolink. They were both instrumental in getting the utility established and getting us pointed in a direction and getting us some staffing to get these projects moving. I'm extraordinarily proud of where we've come, and I was significantly honored that the Fox Wolf Alliance chose the city of Oshkosh for their stormwater award.
Thank you for your hard work on our stormwater. There's a lot of staff time that goes into making sure that when the Stormwater Utility Board makes a decision, that it's implemented and we do everything properly, including looking for grants and alternative funding sources. And that's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to stormwater. And so I thank you for your time and dedication to that as well. I mean, some of those members of the utility committee at the State of the City last year were getting awards for 15 and 20 years on various boards and commissions. So they're, it's a dedicated core group. I'm the young gun on that committee, and I've been on that committee for five years, so. A shout out to the committee again. Thank you for their time and dedication and staff's time. You're, James, you've done a lot to make sure that that program has been spearheaded now that you've passed that off to Mr. Ferris. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It was very exciting to be recognized by your peers at that event last week.
It really was.
There's only been good comments from the attendees.
Right. I think James did a very good job, you know, speaking to the award. We're very proud of James and all of our staff members. But also, I think it bears repeating that, you know, we appreciate the citizens making their feelings known about their support for stormwater improvements, and we also appreciate the council allowing us to move forward with some pretty bold initiatives. And nobody likes to incur additional costs, you know, whether it be on their utility fee or on their taxes, but it couldn't have been accomplished without the support of the council. So we certainly appreciate that, and I think the community is certainly better for it. So thank you for that. And then finally, the last item that I have listed here is just recognition of the Lumber River Neighborhood Association. We talked about the strategic plan earlier, and a big component of the strategic plan is neighborhood initiatives. And I don't want to steal any thunder away from the council before we get to the strategic planning process this July, but I think we all know that that's a real hot topic for the community, and I think it really, it gives the citizens an opportunity to get involved at the grassroots level and improve the community kind of from the inside out a little bit. So it's very exciting, and it's exciting that we have another neighborhood association that's been formed. For people that aren't aware, it's called the Lumber River Neighborhood Association, and it's located south of Murdoch, both sides of Algoma, and bordered by Elmwood on the east and the river on the west. So we'll see. I think it's going to be a major topic when we get together and start talking about future plans and the strategic plan. But it's very exciting to have an opportunity to work on this and work with the citizens and the council, and we're proud of the formation of these neighborhood associations. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I would now look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.